Council meeting to order, this is our regular session. Could we please start with the roll call?
Yes, Mayor Coombs.
Here.
Council members Bagley.
Here.
Christiansen.
Here.
Finley.
Here.
Levison.
Here.
Moore.
Here.
And Santos.
Here.
Mayor Coombs, we have quorum.
Let's stand for our pledge of allegiance, please.
My pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Anyone wishing to speak at first call, public invited to be heard, will need to add his or her name to the list outside the council chambers. Only those on the list will be invited to speak at first call, public invited to be heard. Speakers who do not place their name on that list will have an opportunity to speak during the public hearing items this evening or final call, public invited to be heard on any item at the end of the meeting. Okay, now I need a motion for the May 19th minutes. Council member Finley.
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. I would like to move approval of the minutes from May 19th.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved in second, let's vote. That passes seven to zero. Dale, are there any agenda revisions?
No, Mayor, there are not.
Is there a report from the city manager?
Yes, Mayor, I'm going to ask Dale Rattamaker to come up and talk about Button Rock.
Okay. Good news, I hope.
Always good news. Mayor Coombs and members of council, I'm Dale Rattamaker, general manager of Public Works and Natural Resources. Tonight, I wanted to announce and, and let the public know that the city has made sufficient recovery efforts at the Button Rock Reserve, that we are now in a position to reopen it to the public, and that reopening will occur next Wednesday, June 17th, at around 8:00 a.m. or after. You can come whenever after 8:00 a.m. The other thing that's going to be happening next Wednesday is the fishing permits are going to be going on sale, 7:00 o'clock here at the Roosevelt Park Memorial Building and 8:00 at the Lions Town Hall. The other good news for our citizens are that we are discounting the price this year to $5 for Lions Utility Customers or Longmont Residents because we provide water service to the town of Lions as council is aware, and $10 for non-Longmont and Lions Utility Customers. So this is probably the best deal in town to have an awesome opportunity to come out and fish. We will have a total of 600 permits again that will go on sale, starting in July. On July 1st, we're going to have daily permits that will go on sale. People can buy up to two of the seasonal or annual permits. That's less than what they were able to buy before because we are expecting a greater demand than what we've maybe seen in the past, and so we want more people to sort of have the opportunity to, to experience that fishing opportunity. A lot of information on the city's website, we have a whole page dedicated to the Button Rock Reserve. Certainly, I also want to let folks know is that flood recovery efforts are continuing up there, so we are not done. It will be another couple of years before we're completely done up there, and so there are areas that are posted not open to the public, and it's really imperative that folks please respect that and stay out of those areas. The watershed rangers will be ticketing violators because it is a, it really is sort of a safety issue if we go too far. The other thing is, please keep your dog on a leash, and let's hope for great sunny weather. So anyway, good news. I think council is aware, we're, we're going to be giving you a real quick little tour as well to let council and some of our other partnering agencies also see the recovery work. So with that, if you have any questions, otherwise.
I do have a question. Is the CP line trail going to be open?
It's, it's open only for runners. No, I'm kidding. It's open.
No problem. Councilman Christiansen.
I just wanted to say thank you so much to everybody who worked on this. It's really amazing and it's incredible to get it done so quickly and so well. Thank you so much for everybody.
I want to thank you for my dog Haley. We'll be glad to see that trail open back up.
And, you know, without saying, but thanks to the council for your support. Staff can't get these things done, and also you guys are sort of with us and frankly pushing us along to get her done, so thank you. You know I'm going to, so thank you.
I guess we have the members of the sideline. Quanis Bugs are here to present the city of Longmont a donation for the 4th of July fireworks.
Mr. Mayor and members of council, good evening. I'm Jim Dill with Still Rovin' Farm. I'm also this year's president of Skyline Quanis Club. I'd like to introduce the other members of our club that's here with us tonight. We have Barry Surless, this developer, Scott Nix, Nix Devitt, he's also the secretary of our club, Dan Benault, Main Street Matt. Our club supports many great causes in Longmont, and over the past several years, we have raised nearly $200,000 for the St. Green Valley Habitat for Humanity. Excuse me, I'm losing my voice. We have financed educational trips for many young adults throughout the community. We have purchased and donated numerous vehicles for those in need. And once again, this year, which is our fifth year in a row, we'd like to present this check in the amount of $15,000 to the city of Longmont for the fireworks show. And two of our major sponsors are First Bank and Thrive It Financial.
It's not made up. It's not made up of dentists, huh?
I can't read it.
S-A-N-T-O-X, right?
Yeah.
Go ahead and give a presentation of the check first, and then we'll come on. There you go, you're running this story.
Got two, two rows if we can.
Short people in the front.
Mayor, you qualify as tall.
So, yeah.
It's good enough.
You want to shake hands again, please? Okay, hang on, I'm going to take another one. Okay, you guys ready?
It spends all the same.
Here we go. All right, thank you very much.
I'd also like to mention that we have a special project that we have going on this year. It's a restored 1956 Chevy that was donated to us by our founding president to raffle off to help with our fundraising for this year that will in turn help with fireworks programs in the future. And now I'd like to introduce you to our founding president, Barry Surless.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, Barry Surless. As you may have seen in the good coverage from the Times Call on both their website and the print, we have a 1956 Chevy wagon that's been restored and modernized as a very, very sound, fun car. We had an independent appraisal done by a broker in Arizona, and it came in at $28,500. And the tickets are being sold, pardon me, for $100 apiece with a maximum of 500 tickets will be sold. So your odds are pretty darn good. And this, this, this car will carry bicycles. This car will carry, accountants can use them, lawyers can use them. If your husband has a cycle shop, he can use them. If your husband has an old 39, he can use them, Val. There's a lot of fun to have been had with this car, and it's going to be a heck of a deal. And so what I've done is, rather than take a lot of your time, we appreciate getting exposure now to the folks out in the audience. I would just like to say that you can call to Pacific Auction. You can see the car at Pacific Auction in the old Hyatt Chevrolet building at 1330 North Main, and you can call up there at 772-32... What's his number? 772-5656-776-9104. You can call my cellphone at 303-588-7772. You can call Dan's office, Main Street Matt, at 776-4840. If anybody wants tickets, just give us a call and we'll bring them to your door. And right now, just for anybody, Bonnie's sitting here with a $100 bill in her hand.
Where's my ticket?
So, Dan has, Dan has tickets with us, and if you would like to go home and convince your wife or husband that it's an okay deal, you can just mail us the, mail us the money and the stuff back, and we do appreciate all the support that we've gotten. Every penny of this money goes back to the community. We take no administrative costs at all. I think, I think Gabe needs a couple of them. Yeah, Brian wants five.
He's going to buy my ticket for me.
Actually, that's a good idea. That's a good idea. Mayor Coombs, I'm going to purchase... Bonnie and Gabe didn't buy, right? No, I mean, you bought. So everybody else short in cash. Well, I'm going to buy tickets representing other council members. However, however, you know, we can't do that. So I'm going to buy five tickets, and if, I'll keep the tickets if they win because they can't take more than $50. I'll keep the car.
And we certainly want to be legally and politically correct, do we not? We do not want to violate state law, but we do appreciate the support of all the council members. And the city manager just got a big raise. Oh, he didn't, I'm just kidding.
You're confusing him with the school district.
Whatever, whatever's handy for you. I just didn't want to take a lot of council time, so just go ahead and mail it back, Brian. Okay. Thank you, Bonnie. Thank you, Gabe.
Check is in the mail.
Brian, thank you, folks. Need another one. My gosh, I just have one more. Mail it to me. Just mail it to me. I'll bring it by the office. Does Jeff need one? Oh, he got one. Okay. Thank you, folks. And we appreciate you folks supporting you, but mostly what we appreciate is everybody watching this on television tonight, seeing that what you folks have done, and maybe they'll give us a call and want to get ahold of us, and we'd be glad to bring tickets to their homes.
Can we drop it off at OJ's tomorrow?
Or, or just mail it. It's a self-addressed stamp envelope up there. Just drop it in the mail. My daughter put, my daughter put the stamps on it, so we make it easy on you. Thank you, folks. We sure appreciate all your help. Thanks for the opportunity presented.
Mayor, Mayor, if I can, I would like to say how important it is that the work that they do in helping us with the fireworks celebration every year, and, you know, they've been, this is an integral part of the community, and everyone looks forward to it. So I wanted to say thank you. We really appreciate that.
Thank you. Now, Ryan Craigroot, the president of Bicycle Longmont, is sure to accept a proclamation. I'll go ahead and read the proclamation. A proclamation designating Bicycle Month and renaming Longmont Bike Mont during June 2015, whereas our nation and our great state of Colorado are experiencing interesting rates of obesity and other lifestyle diseases due to sedentary living and poor diets, and whereas bicycling is very effective at reducing weight and helping the community to establish a healthy, active lifestyle, and whereas the city of Longmont is recognized as a silver-led bicycle-friendly community where residents are able to bicycle to work for errands, to events, to visit friends, and for pleasure, and whereas the month of June is Colorado's Bike Month, and residents and families are encouraged to begin by learning how to safely bicycle in their neighborhoods, Longmont streets, paths, trails, and bike lanes, and whereas everybody is reminded to share the road on June 24th, 2015, during Bike to Work Day and every day. Now therefore, I, Dennis Alcooms, Mayor, and the city council of the city of Longmont, by virtue of the authority vested in me, do hereby acknowledge and proclaim that Longmont shall continue its commitment to being a bicycle-friendly community by supporting Colorado Bike Month during June and Bike to Work Day on June 24th, 2015, encouraging all residents to enjoy the many benefits of bicycling throughout, throughout the year, and by changing the city of Longmont to Bike Mont for the duration of Bike Month in Longmont, Colorado. So go ahead and...
Thank you very much for that great proclamation. From, on behalf of our board of, I'm Ryan Craigroot, as you mentioned, president of Bicycle Longmont. We have a great board of directors, and I wanted to like pack the council chambers tonight, or at least the first, you know, few seats with our board members, but we have a little bit of a ride coming up on Saturday, and so we have a bunch of them out working our packet pickups over at the Longspreek Tavern. And unfortunately, I guess they felt like sitting in a tavern is more fun than sitting at city council. So anyway, no, seriously, we're very happy with our working relationship with the city of Longmont. Longmont is a silver-level bicycle-friendly community, and we think that by working together, we'd be able to get ourselves to that gold level the next time we submit a application to the League of American Cyclists to become that next level up in bicycle friendliness. We have been working with the city. If you read the Times Call this morning, we had a nice article in there, and one of the things that we are working with staff on right now is setting up a detour, a signed detour of the areas that are currently closed on the greenway, that will also reroute cyclists, walkers, runners, users of the greenway. So they have an intuitive way to get around the construction at Main Street and St. Green Greenway, and then as that extends over to Pratt Parkway and Boston as well. So we're really excited to be working with the city in those ways. This weekend, like I mentioned, we have our Good Night Ride that's coming up. In general, we get about, you know, anywhere from 1,500 up to 3,000 people riding bikes. It's mostly families, and we get to ride around Longmont, and the best thing about that is that we turn those 3,000 people into salespeople of Longmont. The one, the number one thing that we hear from our folks who participate in the Good Night Ride, as well as Bike Night, and some of our other things that we do through Bicycle Longmont, is that those folks who come to Longmont from other places are always pleasantly surprised at the generosity, at the kindness, and at the support of our local business community and our residents of Longmont. And they take that back, and invariably, within two or three months of the Good Night Ride, I get phone calls from the cities, organizations, the governments of those different communities, wondering how they can take something like the Good Night Ride that gets their community, that could get their community riding. One of those communities, Brighton. Brighton, Colorado, basically said the same thing that we said here in Longmont, was, well, if that town can do it, we can do it. And so Brighton said, well, if Longmont can be bicycle-friendly, we can be bicycle-friendly. And so I've been working with them to come up with strategies to make Brighton more bicycle-friendly as well. And that all rests on the shoulders of the folks on our board who are doing some hard work, and also the support that we get from staff as well. And it's also, I'm also one more last point. I'm really excited to be here tonight because one year ago tonight, we had a very lively discussion about the Traffic Safety Fund, and that was the night that you all voted to pass the Traffic Safety Fund to set up a fund to help us make Longmont neighborhoods more livable, to make our streets safer, and to help walkers, cyclists, and other people using the roads to be better custodians of the road, and to help us to share the road together. We're really looking forward to something coming from that. You gave it a three-year window for funding. A year has gone by, and we're waiting to hear what we're going to be doing with that, or what the city will be doing with that. It's gone to Traffic Safety Board a couple of times, but nothing concrete has come out of it that we and the cycling community are aware of. And so what we'd like to see is something to come out of that process in the near future so that we can help the city in whatever way we can. We can't receive funding, as Gabe had put on one of the amendments at the decision point. So we're waiting to help the city in whatever way we can to support that that money gets spent to make our streets safer, to make cycling better, and also a better place for folks in our neighborhoods. So with that, we're very excited that we've got a great proclamation, that it's June, and it's Bike Month, and we're going to get a bunch of people on bikes this year. We sent out a survey last fall, and folks had said they were riding bikes a lot less frequently because they didn't know where they could ride. The greenway was closed, or at least segments were closed, and they didn't feel comfortable riding on the streets that paralleled the greenway. And we're working with those folks to help, and help them figure out where to ride. And so far, our numbers are up this year, and we think that people are going to get out there and... there and explore our community on bikes. And so we're gonna start that on Saturday with the Good Night Ride. So thank you all very much.
Thank you, Ryan. So Leo Buuhaker?
Bicycle rides, fireworks, sounds like a fairy tale. As such, the same for city employee salaries also seems like a fairy tale.
Could you please state your name and address for the record?
Leo Buuhaker, 833 Baker Street, Longmont 80501. I received response regarding city employee salaries. The data provided by Boulder Daily camera employee was incomplete, not including benefits, fringe benefits, vacation, and other perks, bringing the city attorney's salary close to one hundred and eighty thousand, more than twice the national average for similar attorneys in cities of this size. Therefore, to bring Longmont to par with comparable communities, I move that the Longmont City Council cut the city attorney's compensation to ninety thousand dollars per year. Is there a second? Almost exactly a year ago today, a disgruntled Boulder Google Inc. employee and his challenged daughter made false and malicious accusations towards me. The city of Longmont believed their lies and false statements and acted upon them. This is a very good example of flawed and racist Longmont government. Following the malicious practices of Google Inc., last Thursday during the tornado, rain, and hail swarm, newly hired code enforcement agent Soto issued a notice claiming that my property had weeds in the front, back, and side in violation of the municipal code. Having cut my grass four times in two and a half months, I didn't have any weeds in violation of the municipal code. Like Boulder-based Google Inc., Soto falsely and maliciously issued a notice, knowing that, one, the rain had prevented me from cutting the grass for two weeks; two, knowing that I cannot cut grass on that same day in fear of life-threatening weather; three, knowingly less than ten miles away, felons in Boulder are selling weed in violation of federal law; four, knowingly that homes off Carolina and Bowen had weeds forty-eight inches high in their front and/or backyards, alleyways; the same for houses on Gay on Longs Peak Avenue, 1254 Gay Street, 706, 707, 716, Bowen Street; over fourteen pictures ready to be forwarded to the media or to the city council; and five, knowing that my next-door neighbor maintains junkyards in its front and backyards with a garage that has explosive signs on it. With explosive signs on his property, if his name, last name were Abdullah, certainly the city would incarcerate him. The city of Longmont must cease discriminatory and heavily biased behavior, given the attitude and content for code enforcement, and after discussing probable causes with Longmont police officer, there may be reason to believe that the city of Longmont was complicit in poisoning grass on my property. Not knowing that this is acid, the poison has spread to trees inside the gate, and I am fearful of cutting the surrounding area. This is dangerous to children and other neighbors who grow produce. A potential terrorist chemical attack on the railroads, and with Longmont's fat cats doing nothing, spending millions to stop fracking, not spending twenty dollars on poison intentionally dumping here my backyard in a produce garden? I am armed against homeland security and the FBI. My questions are how many code enforcement violations were issued in 2011, 12, and 13?
Hey.
Good evening, city council members and mayor. My name is Rick Luke. Address is 2330 Wedgewood Avenue, apartment 10B, Longmont. And I serve on the museum advisory board and also am a director on the Friends of the Longmont Museum Board of Directors. I'd like to thank you this evening for your support in the auditorium project out the museum. We will be opening that up with the public opening on Sunday, June 14th, so we hope people can come on by. It's been quite a long trek to get to that. It's looking pretty good. I'm sure it'll turn out well. We've got the new museum auditorium manager on board. He's got some great ideas, so it's been a long haul to get to this point, and we're excited and want to invite everybody to come along. And again, wanted to say thank you for all the support that's been given. It's a lot of work besides city staff, even outside of the museum staff. I have no idea how many people were involved in that, but it's gonna look pretty good. So again, wanted to say thank you.
Well, thanks, Luke. And one of the most important persons involved is Lynda Stewart and her family. All right, that's the end of Public Invited to Be Heard, so let's see, we don't have any ordinances on second reading, so...
So Mayor Coombs, your consent agenda, item 9A, is ordinance 2015-29, a bill for an ordinance authorizing the city of Longmont to lease the real property known as Vance Graham Municipal Airport Hangar Parcel H34 to Anderson T.E. Family LLC. And that ordinance will... Public hearing and second reading of the ordinance is June 23rd, 2015. Item 9B is ordinance 2015-30, a bill for an ordinance authorizing the city of Longmont to lease the real property known as Vance Graham Municipal Airport Hangar Parcel H44D to 44D West LLC. Public hearing and second reading is scheduled for June 23rd. Item 9C is resolution 2015-40, approving the intergovernmental agreement between the city and the state of Colorado Judicial Department for the provision of a list of potential jurors. Item 9D is appoint and reappoint Affordable Housing Technical Review Group members for 2015, and staff has not asked that anything be pulled.
I move the consent agenda.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved in second. Let's vote. Okay, panel, seven to zero.
Mayor Coombs, your first item on, well, the only item on general business is the proposed changes to powers and duties of the Board of Environmental Affairs. Cal Youngberg will introduce this item.
Good evening, Mayor, members of council. Cal Youngberg, Environmental Services Manager, Public Works Natural Resources. I'm the current liaison, staff liaison to the Board of Environmental Affairs. And in the last couple of months, they've been discussing some desire to change their charge or their duties and their ordinance. And so I'd like Richiel, who's the chair, to come up here and maybe discuss that with you and get your feedback. If there is some, are some suggestions from council or recommendations or changes, we'll take that back to the board and have them act on it and bring back to you. So, Rich?
Good evening, members of council. The board has asked me to ask you to clarify its powers and duties. They have met over a couple of meetings and discussed how they could work, and suggested ideas how they could work more effectively with council. And I'll just give you the two points that they've asked. They would ask for revision of the language to clarify, let's see, to clarify the topics the board can consider and bring to council for discussion. Specifically, consider deleting the section that restricts considering issues that are assigned to other boards and commissions. That bars them from discussing topics. And probably the fracking issue would be one that I think had pushed the discussion. They request the council discuss this and give their input on ideas on the proposed changes to the ordinance, and let an ordinance be rewritten and prepared for council action at a future meeting. Thank you.
Councilmember Santos?
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. I'm confused. After council rewrote the ordinance, then I later on became the council liaison to that board. We had topics all the time. I don't see anything that, besides that they cannot act on other, where they may not be able to act on issues of parks and rec, or water board, because those are specific boards, there were always topics. And it's my understanding that there aren't many topics going to the BEA these last several I'm trying to figure out why the drop-off of agenda items for BEA. At the time, we were able to get, at least at that time, in 2010, 2011, almost basically to stop council from abolishing the BEA. This way, it had a tighter focus about what they could do. I'm also kind of confused about, do other boards and commissions bring things to our attention that, besides going through ordinances or annexations or transportation studies or park requests? What other... I'm kind of confused about what BEA wants to send to the council. I guess that's one of my questions. So the board wants to send things to council, that's what I'm hearing. Is that right, Rich?
I think that it comes more from the fact that, like this year, we've only had, I think, two or three meetings during the year, and they had no topics to discuss. And I think that's probably been the main driver.
See, and I find that interesting because, again, after the ordinance was passed by council, we had many topics. We talked about the redevelopment of the Twin Peaks Mall, talked about mosquitoes. You were there for those. We talked about oil and gas. That was, you know, those are some fun meetings to go to. I'm trying to figure out, what does BEA want that they don't already have? To go into issues with parks and rec. When we were talking about the blueprint in the St. Rain River Master Plan, I was talking with staff, I said, you know what, you need to get BEA on that. And Nick actually said, you know what, that's a good idea. We need to, we're inviting two other boards, we need to have BEA there as well. I believe there was one member of BEA at that meeting. A three-board meeting, and only one board member showed up. So what are they asking? I'm confused. Why the need to change? Are staff just not finding them enough topics, or...
That probably is the issue.
Cal? Rich? I'm confused. We had a plethora of topics when I was liaison.
Yeah, I think the issue is that we have not had a lot of things specifically to bring to them. Staff has identified almost everything that's come to the board this year. We've tried to bring, we've brought some alternative energy, some LPC items. We brought, we did bring the river project this board and went through the scope of it and the options with them. They didn't have many people come to that meeting because they frankly weren't available. I think a lot of people expressed interest on the board, but they just weren't able to come to the meeting that evening.
And I'm aware that, even as members of council, we have lives and things that come up as well, but that was a specific request that I thought was, you know, right up the BEA's alley, having to deal with, you know, the environment of the river corridor.
And we did in their meeting that we had, not the meeting that was the joint meeting of the boards, but we did actually go through with them and get their input and some recommendations that we forwarded. So some of those topics have come up, but there's been a, it's a combination of things. Staff has had to struggle to identify things every month to talk about. We have some overriding big things like the river project, but the milestones in that project come at certain points, and so they're not something to talk about all the time. The other is that we kind of pulled some of the members to come up with topics for each of the meetings, and it's been difficult getting feedback from them mainly because I think their schedules and some of the people just aren't available. One guy's, one member's out of the country for six months.
And we need to find the members of the BEA.
I think that may be part of the problem. You might want people to have more time or maybe have more of an interest than some of our current members do.
That's why I always ask when I do board and commission interviews, do you know what you're getting yourself into? Have you been to the meetings? Have you read the minutes? So there are others, so... I don't see the need to change. I think there are topics that staff can send, especially with the sustainability plan that we've asked you guys to look at. That's right up their alley.
I think one of the concerns the board had was that they would be precluded from commenting on, say, open space or...
Well, that's parks and rec. I mean, that's not BEA, so... And I get that, Cal. And I didn't mean to interrupt, I'm sorry. Cal, we're good. I just, BEA was established out of the Parks and Rec Board because there were issues the Parks and Rec Board were seeing. At that time, council formed the Board of Environmental Affairs. At one point, the Board of Environmental Affairs with the council felt that they were going a little bit too far within their reach, some things were changed, and what we have now. I just, maybe there are just a lack of topics. I don't know.
Yeah, Mayor, council, I did just be aware also, and you are aware, that this is an advisory board to you. As staff, we basically just support them, and we help out with whatever topics that they're interested in, and we bring back information on those topics. We also suggest things they can look at mainly for larger things that are going on within the city that they could have some input on, so... But they are basically a board to advise you, and I think their interest is in having the ability to propose or advise on more topics, and they think they currently have that ability to do, so...
Councilmember Christensen?
This part, if you look at the language, is specifically forbidden to consider any issues unless specified by city council. They have to be directed to do everything by city council, and we haven't directed them to do anything. So this is the only board in all the city that is leashed like this, and if they're going to explore their sustainability plan with any kind of clarity and depth, they need to be, this is simply to get rid of the restrictions that were placed upon them in 2008 and 2009 and 2010. So this is simply to put them in a non-discriminative, in a position where they're not discriminated against the way they have been. And I would support changing this language as it is right now. It's only changing a few sentences.
Councilmember Christensen? Excuse me. Councilmember Ragley?
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. I guess the, I guess my thought is that, I, like Councilmember Christensen, I also read it straight up, that unless city council refers something to the Board of Environmental Affairs, it's not in their purview. I think that, just speaking one of seven, it's difficult for me to oftentimes understand everything that's going on in the city, and I think all of us could make that same or similar comment. So I think that, and I also think that having a board, I mean, different people and organizations play different roles. The Board of Environmental Affairs is advisory. We don't have to do what they say, but it's also good, just like we have a Health and or Housing and Human Services Advisory Board. I've kind of referred to them as the conscience of the community when it comes to affordable housing and services and whatnot. We've got, anyway, everybody plays their role. I think that the Board of Environmental Affairs could play a stronger role. I'd be for this change, but I also don't think we should limit it to, I mean, unless otherwise requested by city council, the board shall not consider issues that are already assigned to other boards and commissions. I think that they should consider other issues, because when we're dealing with the water board, there is, there could be another environmental aspect to it. When we're dealing with open space, we're looking at economics, we're looking at parks and rec, but there's also an environmental impact. And so just being able to say, what do you think? And having one more board that's advising us, I don't necessarily think it's a bad thing, and think that we should actually go one step further and... And think that we should actually go one step further in subsection A, line 21 and 22, NICS, unless otherwise requested by city council, the board shall not consider issues that are already assigned to other boards and commissions. That's how, that's... Has it?
Yeah.
That's proposed.
That's one of the proposed things.
Um, then my packet, oh, well, great, I think that's...
Mayor, Mayor members of council, I think a couple of you are confused on the ordinances that have been done. We included maybe wrongly all the versions of the ordinance that were, that we've gone through. We did actually change several years ago, back in 2010, I believe, 2009, the ordinance to allow the board to bring subjects to city council that were in a broad range of environmental topics. What was in there was, however, was that still a restriction that they could not look at items that were in the purview of other boards. And that's the board's concern, is that they would actually like to have that removed. But otherwise, if you read the language, it's in the 296-020 as it is, which I think is the second to last page.
Got it.
It said, "They can advise the city council on environmental sustainability issues, including air and water quality, pollution prevention, solid waste disposal, recycling, energy efficiency, renewable energy, and green building standards." And then, in addition to that, they said you can also advise the council on items that are requested by council. But the restriction that they're talking about is that last thing, that it says, "Unless otherwise requested, the board shall not reconsider issues that are already assigned to other boards and commissions." So, that's the major change here, that the A would like to have removed. All the other changes that really are just cleaning up the language, there were some redundancies and things, and I did that, so that would be easier to read, I hope. So, there have been three versions of this ordinance. The previous one, yes, the first version was extremely restrictive, it said basically the board can do nothing unless council tells them to. And we got that changed in 2009, 2010, to allow the board to bring up many, many different topics. But there's still that one restrictive sentence in there, and I think that's what the board would like to have removed or altered in the method, in the proposed language. So, that's, I'm just trying to clarify that there are several things in here, we may have confused you by putting everything in here that's the history of this, of this code change.
Councilmember Mar...
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. I guess I'm along the same lines as Mayor Proton Bagley, is that I think that when you have discussions about any issue, it's good to have a broader perspective and other input from the communities at large, and these boards and commissions represent the community at large, and we've always promoted having community input, and I think that tying their hands to only issues that other boards and commissions are not considering is too restrictive. For them, for the environmental board to be effective, I think they need to be able to weigh in on a multitude of different issues, regardless of whether some other board or commission is looking at it. So, I would support changes to this ordinance, allowing them to do that.
Councilmember Mar...
Thank you. I think that what we're talking about, singling out the Board of Environmental Affairs, is that, in stark contrast to a lot of other boards, they are so restricted as to be made ineffective. And I look at other boards that I've been on, I mean, Multicultural Committee, they did, redid their strategic plan, they're refocusing, they didn't have to come to the city council to say, "Oh, is it okay if we really look at making sure our programs have some measures and goals and accomplishments? We want to go towards..." The Historic Preservation Commission didn't have to come to council to do a historic preservation fair that they did a couple of years ago, or talk about infill development, or what the nature of architecture and the historic fabric of the community is. And those are just two examples. But I'm thinking that, more importantly, as others have remarked, these advisory boards are a place where things that will eventually come to council might get their first legs, where interested citizens could come to the Board of Environmental Affairs and say, "You know, we do want to have a new look at the sustainability plan." But, you know what, what had to happen is, because of this restriction, they all showed up at council in January for open forum, to say, "You know, we want to look at some of this stuff, and we understand it's not being looked at." And I also think that the Board of Environmental Affairs had been very active, as Councilmember Santos had said, and they had been making some great base of information on green buildings code and other things that were very important. And, you know, green building code and land use, land use is sometimes planning and zoning, but land use does have an environmental effect on the community also. So, I think that restricting them in the way that had been done is probably exactly the wrong way to keep people interested in this board and allow the board members to really get some good advisory work done for the council. Otherwise, we'll be doing their work for them, they'll have to present what they want to study first to council, and then we tell them to go look at it, and then they come back to us. It's kind of a very stilted way to do policy.
I guess I'm going to weigh in here. You know, if you have an employee you have to micromanage, you're not going to get the productivity of them, and it means you hired the wrong employee. And I kind of look at this board, that we should give them more freedom to, you know, have them look at things that we might not even have thought of. Or, they may have something that another board's working on, but they have a different frame of reference, you know, their lens is different, and so they may come up with ideas, just like we come up with ideas when we share ideas. So, I don't think it's a game changer to restrict that, you know, to remove that sentence that unless otherwise requested by city council, the board shall not consider issues that are not, that are already assigned to other boards and commissions. So, I guess I would support, in general, these changes.
Councilmember Santos?
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. Well, in that case, then you're making the Board of Environmental Affairs superior to all the other boards, because then they can, no, that's how it's being advertised. If you look at page 111, powers and duties, A, and if I'm not mistaken, Cal, this is the one that was passed in 2010?
Yeah, the second change, or the change in the ordinance, yes, that's correct.
Okay. "To advise the city council on environmental and sustainability issues." I believe that's the sustainability plan, "including air and water quality, pollution prevention, solid waste disposal, and recycling, energy efficient and renewable energy, and green building standards." What I just heard from members of council saying, they're not allowed to do that, when it specifically says that they can do that already. By, then, if we're going to allow other boards to, this board to... I can wait. If we're going to allow this board to look at other topics, Housing and Human Services doesn't look at parks and rec. Water board doesn't go into transportation. Now, sometimes, issues get assigned to those boards, so they do get a look at or comment on those. But, what I see is that, taking that out, unless, you know, unless authorized by council to do so, would make this board superior to, basically, on the same level as planning and zoning. Planning and zoning gets it all. And if they're not having topics, you know, I guess we need to do a better job as council and staff to give them topics. I see the big one being the sustainability plan. The other thing is, yeah, I agree, we have these boards for community input, but if they're not showing up, it's incumbent on staff or the council liaison to tell members of council, "We have a problem on our board, we may have to replace some people." Now, that's very extreme, but when I get on boards and commissions, I haven't been on Multicultural Committee, because there's only been one member since I've been on council, and that's been you, Councilmember Levison, that, yes, they do, they are at our, basically, they are selected by council to act on council's behalf on certain topics. But if they're not doing that, it's incumbent on staff and the council liaison to say, "These board members aren't showing up, and we need to make a change." And it would be also incumbent on the council liaisons to tell those members of each of their boards, "We expect you to show up. We had other candidates who may not just have made the cut, but close enough to have enough interest." But I see making this change would, we're going to give BEA to be the super-all, be-all board of the entire city. So, I guess they can also do Housing, look at Housing and Human Services issues as well.
You know, I think it's, environmental is kind of a cross-cutting technology. I mean, it goes across everything, it's ingrained in everything we do, so it doesn't mean that they have more power, it's just, and they're still an advisory board, they're not superior or anything.
But changing it, you allow them to go do other things.
Well, I'm still fine with that.
Councilmember Christiansen?
This is the only board that has been discriminated against this way, and required to only study the issue, they are forbidden to study, they should only consider issues if authorized to do so by city council. That's discriminatory toward this board alone. I would move that we pass this language as is.
Second.
I'm moving seconded. There's some further discussion here, I guess. Do you want to turn your mic off, then?
Oh. Councilmember Santos?
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. So, I'm confused, the way it is now, or the way it's being proposed? That motion wasn't very clear. Well, that, that wasn't clear. So, apparently, the motion is to make the changes recommended by the Board of Environmental Affairs. Am I, did I get that correct? So, I made it correct for you. So, they're allowed already to do everything that you've all talked about. And now they can pull any topic off of water board, Prab, airport, museum, to do that. You're making them a super board. And I can't vote for that. I mean, they're, they have their topics set out already, if there's something outside of those, they can just send a message through the council liaison. That worked when I was on the board as liaison.
Councilmember Levison?
A couple of different thoughts to support this motion. In March, I had the privilege of going to this workshop at the French Embassy on cities and environment and sustainability and resiliency. And, in fact, a lot of examples that we saw from other US cities, and cities, frankly, of our size, and other parts of the world, and in France specifically, did have an environmental lens when they were building public housing. Because, if you build a piece of public housing that's, you know, basically supported by the public fund, if you make it more sustainable, it is a lower cost for people to live there, if it's being built to help people that are of lower income. And so, when you look at, I'm not saying that, it just, that they had a Board of Environmental Affairs that said, you know, "We're going to ram this policy through when we look at affordable housing," but there was an influence of looking at issues of the environment and sustainability, even in the viewpoint of the Housing Authority, in some of the examples of cities that we saw. Also, transportation, you know, having your density built around key transportation hubs, and making sure that, you know, regardless of the density, there were transportation options other than just motorized vehicles. So, I'm not thinking that this board is going to say, we're going, that they will start pulling topics off of agendas aggressively from all these other boards. Frankly, I don't think they would have time to do so. And I think decisions on the other boards would be made before they would get to those topics. But I think that it would foster a different level of communication, perhaps, if the Board of Environmental Affairs had the option to make some comment and discussion. Because certainly, water board is not going to talk about the environmental impact, that's not, I mean, it's not really their core charge, they're looking at certain policy discussions in that area. And so, in some ways, the Board of Environmental Affairs can be an enhancement to other boards. And that's why I'm going to support the motion to have this revised language, which is the one that says "proposed," it's in all the multicolors on one of the last pages of our packet this evening.
Councilmember Bagley?
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. And I guess, I just wanted to be said that, I mean, I just, and I don't think we're doing it, I just want to be careful that, as we're voting on this, regardless of what side you come down on, when you hear words like "environmental" and "sustainability," automatically, we go to our corners and we think, "Hey, you know, the other side's going to use it to their advantage." But I think, I mean, some of the examples, for example, I don't think it would have been a bad, I mean, the airport advisory board, for example, I mean, people who tend to sit on that board are people who love airplanes and airports, or people who sit on the water board love, you know, whatever the water board does.
You guys should change boards.
Yeah, but the, I haven't sat on that one yet. But the, I mean, I think that having someone that comes forward, you know, I mean, like the whole airport noise mess that we've been dealing with. I mean, okay, so tell us about noise pollution, you look into it and bring it back, and they could have very well said, in a more, using different language, that, "Hey, after talking to city attorney and staff, this is where we come down, it's not possible." And so, I can see a lot of ways by just offering, I mean, in my, in my office, we've got, I've got different attorneys coming saying, "I think we should do A, and I think we should do B." And then, you know, we call the shot, and we go forward. So, I just look at this as one more option that, and granted, if it does get out of hand, and the board is aggressive, any board, if they get aggressive with council, it's quite clear that you can't get aggressive with council, because you're advisory. And so, we can always change it in the future, just like we've changed it in 2010, and we're about to, it looks like we're about to change now. So, I'm going to vote for it.
You know, Councilmember Santos, Brad, I, you know, this board would have maybe more power than planning and zoning. I don't see it that way. You know, let's say you're building a new neighborhood, and this environmental board looks at things like walkability, you know, lane width, and, you know, just comes up with some suggestions that if we did this and this, perhaps this neighborhood would be more sustainable, more walkable, people would be healthier, they spend less on transportation. And I think that's all just good input, it's good government. It doesn't mean that we have to follow it, or that planning and zoning has to follow it, or, but it's just another lens, or another set of eyes on looking at a problem. And so, I don't feel threatened that they're going to take over the city and run roughshod over all the boards, but...
Maybe that's what you...
Councilmember Santos?
Thank you, Mayor. I have no, I don't think a board's going to run roughshod over the city, because they work for us. But, having cer, I change boards every two years, and I would recommend council, other members of council to do that, so you get a perspective. I've been on museum, I've been on library, TAB, Prab, several boards, this board in particular. You know, this is going to be a very interesting change if this passes, because, again, I think you're making one board a little bit more powerful than others. And to say that the water board doesn't take into the, take into consideration the environmental impacts of whether they sell water or the water aspects, shows naivete of members of council who've never been on that board.
Councilmember Mar...
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. I think the reason that this was changed years ago is because the environmental board overstepped their bounds. I think that other people felt threatened about it, and that's the reason it was changed. I don't necessarily think it was necessary, it is an advisory count, it's an advisory board. We don't have to do anything that they advise us to do, we just have, you know, we have them, we appoint the people that are on there, we appoint people who hopefully will do their due diligence in deciding what to bring back to us. I don't have... I don't have, really have a problem with changing it at all. If, once again, they become a politically active thing rather than an advisory board like they should be, we can always harness them back in.
Taking notes, Mr. Yeh?
Okay, I think that's, that a motion has been seconded, I think it's time to vote. Okay, pass of six to one, but Councilmember Santos, the same.
Thank you, Council.
Sorry, Cal. Oh, sorry, I just wanted to say we'll bring this back as a board, and it's a few to act on, for the future meeting.
Yes.
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. Rich, Cal, Councilmember Christensen, put the Board of Environmental Board members on notice. If they can't attend, we'll get new members. I'll make the motions myself.
Okay, now it's time for final call, public invited to be heard. Is anybody from the public that'd like to speak at this time? All right, so now it's time for mayor and council comments. Councilmember Finley?
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. I'd like to have Bonnie's Business of the Week. I, this evening, ate at the Samples Bistro Restaurant over here at 370 Main Street. It was awesome. They offer small plates, which is just perfect when you're on a diet, like I am, a lot. They're a craft restaurant with a focus on unique beer, wine, and food. And their mission is to employ the developmentally disabled in jobs that build self-esteem. So it's a business with a purpose, and I really enjoyed it. Great atmosphere, and I encourage you all to try Samples Bistro at 370 Main Street.
Councilmember Santos, singular comments? Just a reminder, we won't be here next week. We'll be at CML, I think a good portion of us, and to those traveling to the NLC meetings, safe travels. Safe travels.
I'm jumping here real quick. You know, I made a motion that's probably a little bit, I'll advise, and a while back to bring composting up to, as a citizens' vote, and after that meeting, I became aware of some other ways that, some new cutting-edge technology that we could perhaps look into a lot more detail, that could be a lot more efficient, you know, some single-stream and double-stream technology. And because of that, and also, you know, even if we don't flush that out fully, I think it's more important that we get, you know, a more equitable trash system, you know, before we really bring back composting. And if we can't, you know, composting, you know, should be, I think, not necessarily a mandatory thing. If you can make it work any other way, would be better. But, I mean, I'm for compost, that compost, and I generate very little trash. In fact, you know, we don't put out our trash barrel, but maybe once a month. But, you know, because of that, and because of some of this new technology that's becoming available, I would like to make a motion that we remove the direction that we gave staff to put composting on the ballot this November.
Thanks, sir.
Okay, got it, first and second. Okay, shall we vote on it? Okay, that passes seven to zero. Thank you. Councilmember Santos?
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. If it's the technology we looked at, I would hope that BEA would look at that.
Yes. It's a good thing they could look at. Councilmember Levison?
Thank you, Mayor. So I think that all of us have noted that we've been not doing too much work on a Tuesday night on a regular basis, and we do miss that activity. And I just wanted to congratulate the staff of the museum, and in fact, the whole city for this grand new space that we're going to have, not just for city use, but availability for businesses, for conferences, for a whole spectrum of uses. And especially as a parent of two performers, I have to tell you, it's really hard to find a place for musicians and recitals. And I think this will be an absolutely spectacular space to do musical performances, especially for all of the great music teachers that we have, teaching young and older students in the community. I also, something else I was thinking of, I'm having a blank time. Anyway, so I wish everybody the best on that, this weekend with the opening of the museum. And then, again, thanks to the Kiwanis Club for making the Fourth of July really a great celebration with the city. The other thing I would like to, the gentleman that came from Baker Street to talk about the code enforcement issue, there are a lot of people, I've had elderly neighbors especially, who have not been able to cut their yard. I personally have cut other people's yards this season. And, you know, if you don't get to your yard on a specific day, it's really hard to get that grass cut. There was a time where I was able to get the front of my house done, and a good swatch of the back, but then you started having thunder and lightning, and you cannot operate a mower with an impending storm. And you cannot, once the grass goes above four inches, you cannot cut grass that is sopping wet like that. So I actually spoke with a code enforcement officer about a situation I noted in the 700 block of Baker Street at a house where I know that an older person lives, and they were going to go and just check out whether or not they needed some help. I know that Care Connect has a program for seniors, just like they do the Snowbusters program, they have a Yardbusters program. And I want to encourage people, if you've got a neighbor that, you know, has some physical challenges, or older neighbor that can't get out there and do the work themselves, to, you know, pitch in, or see if we can't talk to the senior center and get them connected up with Care Connect. So, and then finally, just on a personal note, longtime neighbor of mine has passed away. I'm not going to mention her name, but many of us figured out that she lived in a historic east side neighborhood for over 50 years. Her parents bought a house in 1965, probably when Baker Street was still unpaid. And, you know, also thinking about the anniversary of D-Day, and how many of the Greatest Generation are not here with us anymore, I just want to give a salute out to all those folks that have invested long in this community, have maybe lived here many, many decades, that when they get older, we don't see them or acknowledge their contribution over many years to the community, but maybe we should, you know, considering the D-Day anniversary, and in particular, this person's passing, that we note and thank people that have longevity in our community. So just want to thank my neighbor for watching out and being an active person walking the neighborhood and in the community. She was somebody who worked at J.C. Pettys when J.C. Pettys was still on Main Street, which, I mean, I've lived here 18 years. I don't, I never knew J.C. Pettys was on Main Street, but Bonnie does. So she may, this woman may have waited on you one time at J.C. Pettys. So anyway, just what I ask people to give some good thoughts about those that have been here many, many years.
Councilmember Finley?
On that note, that made me think of something. There is this Friday night on Main Street, in conjunction with the concert on Main Street from, I think it's six to nine, an all Longmont High School class reunion. So anybody who ever went to any Longmont High Schools can go and attend and perhaps see classmates you haven't seen in a very long time. It should be a lot of fun, the music will be good, and I hope that all of you will attend.
Councilmember Levison?
I now remember, I wanted to also congratulate everybody that made Startup Week such a success. We had great coverage in the newspaper. I think all of us had received a little report back from Scott Converse about not only the interest from within our community, but so many people from outside of Longmont that came and talked, various panels, with people that, you know, many of us hadn't heard from before. I just think that the great success of Startup Week, and I think that one of the things they may add, when I was in Jacksonville, they happened to have this other part of Startup Week for Jacksonville, where they have this, basically a spark fund, where people can vote for startup entrepreneurial funding for nonprofits and businesses. And I think that's a new phase we might add next year. I've had some conversation with Scott about how to even spread it out larger in the community. So congratulations for everybody that participated. If I start to list people, I'll miss somebody, but thanks to everyone.
City manager, do you have any additional remarks?
No comments, Mayor, council.
City attorney, do you have any remarks?
No comments, Mayor.
All right, this meeting is adjourned.